Yeah, I'll do that right now. Okay.
You got to be yourself.
Where's the card? Where's the card? Did I just get the card? I don't know.
Yeah. Everybody's on it. It was one of the last.
You didn't stop anything?
Oh. You know, I'm doing well.
Too much.
Too late. You're out there.
Too late for me to do it the other time. I was always doing all for me. Yeah. I was always being a little bit.
Oh.
Thank you.
Time. It's time.
Erica said she can use the line, Colin should be online and Marty.
Yep, as Marty works. Uh, oh, we'll just, we'll just make sure Colin can be a panelist. No, I just promoted him to panelist so he can move over. Okay.
Do you have the agenda? I just want to look.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right, dude. By the way. None of those. I should be way better than it looks. Yeah.
Okay.
We, um, didn't put it in the packet because we wanted it to be a surprise.
Wait with the rain on, I'll blame the rain, and I know Trustee Sparhawk is on her way from the basketball game in the middle of the time, so see how that goes.
What just happened to him?
It is online, so Jessica, you ready?
Yeah.
You can go on call.
Chris Hassick.
Yeah.
Marty Silverstein.
Here.
Luisianas.
Yeah.
Erica Sparhawk. Ben Baumtalk.
Yeah.
Lonnie Kitchen.
Yeah.
Colin Laird.
Here. He's online.
My floor, start on. Um.
Hey.
Going us remotely. Um, we have a pretty light agenda tonight, actually. Yeah, we'll start off with the consent agenda with, uh, A is accounts payable, B is for trustee minutes from March 28th, C is special then liquor license to Colorado Mountain College, D is environmental board member appointment for Morgan Gossdon, uh, E is the dandelion day proclamation. Wow. This is fun. Um, and then F is the Aspen book. So I'm remembering, I don't know what I'm understanding. Sorry, if I can get that. Just kind of, um, there we go. Um, so the dandelion day proclamation is honoring the 25th anniversary of dandelion day. Whereas the town of Carbondale has recognized the long history of culinary and medicinal use of the dandelion. The town recognizes the importance of safe and healthy park spaces for our public and our ease to enjoy. Whereas the town seeks to, uh, seeks alternative methods of weed management in our public spaces and encourages the public to the same. And whereas the town adopted the dandelion as its town flower in recognition of its underappreciated benefits and at the urging of environmental board, uh, the environmental board with leadership of Dr. John Bill, also known as Dr. Dandelion. And whereas 25 years ago, the first dandelion day was celebrated to honor the plant in a manner suited to our community. And whereas dandelion day continues to be celebrated at the foot of Mount Surfris in spring. Now, therefore, I have been multiple mayor of the town of Carbondale to hereby proclaim this Saturday, not this Saturday, but Saturday, May 13th, uh, as Dr. Dandelion Day in the town of Carbondale. And I urge all citizens to celebrate dandelion day by gathering in surplus parks, celebrate the dandelion and by pursuing safe and effective alternatives to weed management. So if there's no other items to pull out of the agenda, it's not going to make. To approve that, uh, along with the rest of the decision. And there's also the Aspen book memorandum.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Marty, second by Marty, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes and have this.
Um, thank you.
Next up is, uh, person's present not on the agenda, we do have an agenda item to, uh, talk about Mark Rumeir's great contributions to the town, so you don't have to talk about Mark right now, you can wait a moment, but if there's anything else not on the agenda, um, that you'd like to talk about, now's your chance. We're, no, we're not, we're gonna talk about you in a minute. This is just. Anything other than Mark. Okay. Uh, seeing none, we'll move on with trustee comments.
We only have a couple of things coming up, I mean, Arbor Day is going to be coming up in about two weeks, I believe. I've got this proclamation too, so thank you for the reminder. Okay, so you can read that to us. Um, isn't this, uh, the waste collection day?
It is.
It's Saturday.
So that's a big deal, Carbondale residents, more information, go to your town website. Uh, it's a chance to clean out the garage, the backyard, et cetera. Uh, as we transition from spring, typical Rocky Mountains spring, rain, snow, sixties. And, uh, that's about all I have, except congratulations, KDNK, 40th anniversary, you made your goal, you've earned your mortgage. So, I mean, good job, guys. And Louise, Chris, and all of KDNK, thank you.
And by five point, that is wonderful, that's all as well, congratulations.
Fortunately, I was at times, I didn't get to go. But I'm sure Louise, who just followed in someone's, and everything I've heard has been amazing.
Yeah, it was really great.
Um, yeah, thank you, Bob, to really for the whole community, beautiful town, well, the staff, town staff. Everyone who dedicated their time to the community was just amazing to see them. What sports, but thank you to everybody. So, good. Can we comment on?
Oh, one, I've got Wilderness Workshop of Biggin County Healthy Rivers asked me to invite the public to the upcoming community summit on the future of the Crystal River on Thursday, this Thursday, April 27th. It's the official kickoff of the collaborative, uh, process looking into how to protect the Crystal River, including the wild and scenic designation. It's an important step toward permanent protection of the crystal and strong community turnout is key. Um, additionally, the collaborative is seeking to assemble a student committee representing diverse perspectives, um, on the crystal. So if you're interested, you can sign up on either the Wilderness Workshop website or the Biggin County Healthy Rivers website. Um, both will be there co-hosting. Um, so this is called the Community Summit on the Future of the Crystal River from 5 to 8 this Thursday at the Marble Firehouse, which is 300 West Park Street in Marble. And I plan to be there as a voice of the outdoor recreation industry and also to publicly thank um, Healthy River in defining the completion of the restoration project.
What time did you say that was?
From 5 to 8.
5 to.
Marble, um, Firehouse. Well, then, and last week, I also attended the Garfield County Energy and Environment Symposium. Um, it had an impressive agenda and lineup of speakers, three from the governor's cabinet, which were executive directors of Public Health, DNR, and DOLA. I was familiar with the first two, but I wasn't with Rick Garcia of DOLA, and although his presentation did not include the new land use bill, um, it was interesting to see how public housing, which is one of his more active departments, lined up with and is supported by each of the other director's agencies. Um, of the 40 presentations given over the two-day conference, the air quality effect and mitigation of greenhouse gas, VOX, NOX, and fugitive methane gas emissions entered into every one of them, including the environmental justice topic, which was quite a change from previous years. Um, interestingly, John Stroud of Post Independent and I, um, had a conversation. He's been covering the event for the last nine years and was also impressed by the transition over the last three symposium, moving from an oil and gas industry focused event to an environmental impact based agenda, so progress. Thank you.
Uh, just one thing from today that I believe the clear one, a pretty big grant from the Department of Energy, the geothermal project over the Third Street Center.
Oh, that's great. Oh, that's great. I saw it email and I didn't have time to read it yet. That's fantastic.
Yes, that's pretty exciting, I'll be really excited to see where that goes.
Yeah, great.
Colin may have something to say about that.
Colin, any comments? Chris just brought up the geothermal grant. I'm muted, but we're not hearing anything.
I'm on my own, we need to move.
Okay. Then you can go ahead and, well.
Okay, um, just quickly, um, after further financial diligence at last week's detox facility governance meeting, mine spring staff reported a more favorable result. Um, the project is now showing, uh, 67,0253 budget gap, which is one seventh of what was presented last meeting, um, and includes new medical management on models increased operating expense. So the projected contribution for Carbondale was shown, uh, to have an uptake of 400 for 2024.
400 dollars.
Mm-hmm. An uptake, so that's for the 2024 budget for a total of 10,400, because we committed the 10,000 for five years, right? From the withdrawal management fund, whatever we're calling it, I can't remember what that bucket's name is. Um, there will still be an incremental increase over the next five years, ending with the 2027 projection of 11,700, roughly, so something for staff to note, um, moving forward, and of course, I'll keep us updated on, uh, as things progress.
Thanks, I'm glad that that wasn't, um, a figure of increase. Colin, say if you can't hear. We'll keep working on that and we'll let him chime in when, you know, it gets fixed, I'll add a couple of comments. Um, I sent our letter today that, um, Colin and I had agreed to write on behalf of the board, um, to Representative Velasco and State Senator Kerry Will, on state legislature, writing the Senate bill. Um, I think it's the number 123 or something about housing. Um, it was substantially amended that bill since we last discussed it, and really the provisions that were most concerning for the rural resort communities like Aspen, which didn't even impact us in the beginning, um, were removed at the Colorado Association of Ski Towns, um, request, so it's really. which didn't even impact us in the beginning, um, were removed at the Colorado Association of Ski Towns, um, request. So it's really. And, um, to one of our upcoming meetings, just send the letter to CDOC, really asking them to potentially be the, like, convenient facilitator of some discussions, just moving our account. Uh, upon the transportation, including those and potential solutions, um. And so I, um, just wanna keep the word up to date.
When that comes forward, you're not surprised by it. Um, another meeting I attended yesterday was the Aspen International Mountain Foundation, AIMF. They convened leaders from across the valley, um, as a side event to their international mountain summit. You may remember, we've talked about that, uh, I don't know, a year or so ago now, um. And they've had a couple of follow-up meetings where they're asking, should we do something more regionally, um, on climate as far as funding or collaboration or something like that? So it's Eagle County, Garfield County, and Picking County kind of all talking about that. So Alice Laird from Clear was there, um, leaders from the the Eagle County equivalent, which is the Walking Mountains Foundation, and then, uh, core up in Aspen and Picking County. We're all there. So I look forward to next steps on that. Nothing concrete came out of that, but regional collaboration is usually a good thing. Um, and then I think lastly, uh, other than to just shout out five point Louis, great job and town staff. I mean, I, it's amazing when we really look at how many festivals and events our staff supports and to see them all here, working in the rec center all weekend and all that. I hope everybody got some time off after that. And, um, that was a, that was an exhausting event, I'm sure, but it was great. Proud to have that in Carbondale. Um, and then lastly, uh, this is the Arbor Day proclamation. So proclamation number two, um, for the night, I might not read it all, but, uh, whereas, um, in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be setting aside for the planting of trees, which became Arbor Day. Um, whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing erosion, um, cutting cooling and heating costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, providing habitat. Whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Uh, uh, now therefore I've been Bonfog Mayor of Carbondale, Colorado, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May sixth, twenty twenty-three as Arbor Day in the says city, town of Carbondale, Colorado. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
So just an extra note, there's gonna be a tree planting at, um, the Thompson House.
Oh.
Okay. In the garden there and I will let, uh, the sober son know the date and the time. So we get the word out and I'll mention it over Katie and Kay as well.
Great, perfect. Thanks. Any other trustee comments?
Yeah, Juan, you mentioned funding that triggered me. Um, so ceiling, seeing DOL on last week's work session agenda that due to road fatigue, I wasn't too sharp for. Um, I'm not exactly sure which agency last week's guest was representing, but to address our future participation, what seemed to be an open question. Uh, footnote is that an economic development coordinator is being sought by AGNC as a resource to assist member organizations such as ours. Of course, Commissioner Mike Sampson is our representative with AGNC. Um, in identifying potential implementation funding sources. So implementation, not planning, but implementation funding sources, including but not limited to state and federal programs and grants, private foundation funding, revolving loan funds, and venture capital. So that's what I've got on that.
Okay, thanks, Lauren.
Yep.
And we're moving right along then. Uh, Colin, did your sound ever work out? Did you have anything to add?
Uh, just, uh, following up on Chris, that, uh, we did get word today that the coalition of Clear, uh, the National Renewable Energy Lab in Golden and the Third Street Center received word that we're to proceed to contract for a DOE grant to work on geothermal project over at the Third Street Center. So we're very excited. Uh, still a little bit of work to do, but it could be a great, uh, tool to achieve the net zero energy district that we've wanted to move forward on for many years and also, uh, provide some insights on, uh, geothermal related to the new pool.
Great. That's great news, Colin. Uh, you know, people have asked me about geothermal, both for the pool and for the town center housing project. And I think it's something that we don't have experience with really at that scale. So it'll be interesting to see what comes out of that and how it might apply to any of those three sites, really.
Agreed.
Great. Anything else, Colin?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for being with us tonight. Um, moving right along, then attorney's comments, Mark. Okay, Lauren, managers.
Uh, just a couple of things. Um, last week's interviews for a design consultant for the town center project, um, were long, but great. We had incredible candidates. Um, I know that, uh, we talked briefly about it. Um, Ben and Lonnie were part of that um, sort of alternating interview panel. And now it's back in art spaces, um, uh, Baileywick and they're doing a little bit of thinking and they're gonna come and report to the board on May ninth um, with a decision.
Curious.
So, yep, it's, um, I, I don't think we can go wrong there. We had some very good candidates. Um, also the CCCMA conference is this week. So if you can't find me, that may be where I am. I'm gonna be popping in and out back and forth, um, to Glenwood and here. So, um, you know, hopefully there'll be some interesting, um, networking and information that, that comes and, and we'll be able to coordinate some of the regional things that we're working on as well.
So that's county and city.
County and city, yeah, managers.
And that's in Glenwood?
Mm-hmm.
That's convenient.
Yeah, it's at the Hotel Colorado. It's about every year. So. Anyway, that's all I have.
Thanks, Lauren. Um, all right, the big event of the night, Mark Ramirez is retiring. You could join us up here, Mark. I think we have some nice things to say about you. Um, Kevin, I think is gonna.
He's still bossing you around temporarily.
Chonga, Mark.
You don't have to, but it'd be nice.
So I'm gonna just start out with a brief summary of kind of Mark's career in the valley. And then say a few things and then maybe, once you all are done, if I could have one more moment, that'd be awesome. So the first part I'm gonna read, cause I had to read it out of your personnel file. For over forty years, Mark has been working in water and wastewater departments in the Roaring Fork Valley. That's a pretty amazing accomplishment, I think. He had a few little stints before he started in the Roaring Fork Valley, but he started in the valley with snow mass water and sand, worked in both water and wastewater for, I think, about eight and a half years. Ish.
Yep.
And then he moved to Aspen in their water department where he worked for about sixteen years and he's been with us for the last over sixteen years. So if you do the math, that's over forty. We won't count his time in Route County, because we know what, what kind of people they have up there. I just wanna say that I really have appreciated over the last seven years working with Mark. He's got a very calm demeanor. He's a good problem solver. And it's just been great to work with you.
Thank you.
So I really appreciate that. And he's taught me a tremendous amount, not only about our specific systems in Carbondale, but just water and wastewater in general, which is one of the things that drew me here, because I didn't have a lot of experience in that in my previous careers. And it's been great to have somebody to learn from like Mark. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yep.
Anybody else from the public like to, or staff like to speak? And then we'll hear from board members and then we'll come back to Kevin. Okay.
Can I, can I, um, just ask if we would like to invite, um, Mark's wife Robbie to come up and sit with him?
Sure.
Oh, awesome. I just, uh.
You've been as much a part of this as he has.
With all those years as well.
Sorry, Eric.
On call at two o'clock in the morning. This is my wife Robbie. Hi Robbie. Thanks for being.
Yeah.
Part of the team, I'm sure. Yes, yes. Um, I just wanted to, uh, say it's been great to work with Mark. He's not a man of many words, but uh, he, um, used these, um, words that I'm gonna express, uh, many times to me. Hey Eric, do you know you have to meter that? So he, and I'm like, oh, okay, we'll start over. But, uh, thanks for all your help with, uh, what we're doing in the parks and recs.
Thank you for supporting what we're doing too.
Good. And to have a great retirement.
River, Crystal River Restoration Project is a big one.
Yep. And we'll, we'll get her done for you.
Appreciate that.
I enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, go ahead, please, Christine.
So, uh, I, I've only had, uh, the benefit of knowing Mark for the last year, so maybe a little less, six months. And, and, um, I'm just really grateful for everything that you do is, is in kindness with everybody around you. You're always very thoughtful and diligent at your job. There's very few people that do a job with the diligence that Mark shows and the kindness. He's always got a thoughtful comment to say, and he always says it in a way that is kind to others. So thank you for everything that you've done.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I would just add that, uh, I think Mark exemplifies the kind of work that, um, really gets things done in, in a town like Carbondale. It's, it's quiet, it's behind the scenes, it's not in the headlines, it's not in the paper. What we say at these meetings, um, is what people focus on a lot of the time, but it's your expertise. Uh, the trust that you've been able to build, that we know that if something's in your hands, it's gonna be done well, it's gonna be done right. And it's such a critical service that people don't think about on a daily basis, right? They turn on their tap, they flush their toilet, they expect that that's all gonna work. We've seen headlines from other communities around the country when things aren't managed well. And, uh, it allows me to sleep well at night, knowing that we've had you at the helm, um, and, and taking care of those things. And I really think that your, like, foresight and planning and at, even, you know, we talked about adaptation to climate change and redundancy and backup and all those kinds of things. Um, I think it's, we have a lot to be proud of and we're in such a good position to accommodate the, the growth that we anticipate and the, the climate changes that we anticipate and all those sorts of things because of your work. So, um, your legacy is gonna live on for, um, a long time in this town and, and we really just appreciate everything that you've done.
Thank you, Mayor.
Right. Yeah, um, first off, your perseverance and the Crystal River Restoration is a good example. And your professional demeanor. Um, and I'll echo the mayor. When things go wrong, it's on the front page of the paper where people hear about it. Why aren't I getting water? Why do we have a water truck bringing us water? And we know some neighboring communities that have had those problems. We've never had those problems. We've had drought years that you've helped guide us through. And, uh, everyone should appreciate the years of service and the professionalism that you've shown. And I just wanna say thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Me, of course, Mark. I have to say that Mark commands remarkable respect by everyone at every water meeting that I've been a part of over the past twelve years. Um, with results that'll carry your presence in perpetuity. And I'm afraid, scared to be the one that's left behind to have to project your presence at these things with Kevin as well. Um, and we'll do our best to carry your name forward. Thanks a lot, Mark.
Thank you. You can't be more scared than I am for doing this.
More scared than in starting the hydroelectric thing, right? I mean, yeah.
We'll see what we do.
Good.
Uh, Chris, go ahead.
I'll just echo a lot of your comments. I really appreciate the commentary about all the behind the scenes work that is really goes unthanked day to day. And thank you so much for keeping our water taps on for sixteen years. Um, and then, but mostly personally, I've gotten to work with you with the E-Board and I just have really appreciated, uh, some of the qualities that Kevin mentioned about your calm demeanor and, um, ability to problem solve and come up with good evenly reasoned answers to questions for people and stuff. It's been really great to work with you there. And I'm sorry, I won't get to more. Thanks.
Thanks, Chris. Um, Kevin, looks like you're back on.
Can I say something?
Yes, of course.
I was trying to let all of you.
Yeah.
Talk. I'm just so grateful that I had this short opportunity to work with you, Mark. Um, your ability to, um, confuse me is really beyond, um, but, uh, but I also find that your expertise really helps, um, build a base of knowledge that we can all operate from. And you are not afraid to be creative in your problem solving, to look at new technologies and what we can do better. And it doesn't matter how long you've been doing it. You continue to try to be better and to make us all better. And I think that that has been, um, incredibly generous and also just has provided us with such a great base, um, to be able to continue. And we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Lauren. Okay. Oh, there's more.
Always more.
So we'll talk about two sad things. One is my personal sadness, because I'm sad to see Mark go, but I'm very happy for you. The one thing that I'm sad about for you is that we didn't get quite to the finish line with the hydro project. And I know that was a big thing for you. Um, you know, I kinda went back through the history of that. And it seems like it came up like back in nineteen ninety-seven as kind of a thought. But it really wasn't until you got here and that first SGM study around two thousand and ten that you were a part of and kinda went through. And then, you know, we moved on kinda in the two thousand seventeen time range of actually the board authorizing us to go out, get this thing studied and get it done. And then COVID hit and then Forest Service permits hit and everything that takes way longer than you think it should. The good news is while Mark and I were talking today, one of the main pieces that we were waiting for showed up on a semi here. So that's good. Still got a few more, but, um, that's great. But, you know, I don't personally think that the Nettle Creek Hydro would have happened if it wouldn't have been for Mark continuing to push us down that road. So thanks for doing that and hopefully we'll get her done. You can come up and visit.
You got too much stuff to not do it now.
I guess that's true. We do not want to be Aspen.
That was, that, that was a big lesson.
So, um, with that, I'm gonna throw out a crazy idea and see what sticks. But I would propose that maybe the board consider naming the new hydro facility, the Omera Hydroelectric Facility up there. And with that, I'll be done.
I'll second that.
I can't make motions, Lonnie.
Make a motion.
The motion on the second page. All ready for you. Okay. I will make a motion that the new hydroelectric facility at the Nettle Creek Treatment Plant be named the Omera Hydroelectric Facility. And that staff are directed to install signage on the building according. And that staff are directed to install signage on the building accordingly, once the facility has been constructed. Yay, it didn't say operational, Mark, but it said construct.
Second that motion.
We've worked together long enough.
As long as it's not on the road, that's okay.
Okay.
So we have a motion by Lonnie and a second by Marty, is there any discussion? I pre. Yeah, I appreciate Kevin for for bringing up this idea. Um, and you know, I gotta admit, I'm always a little hesitant on naming rights, but this uh, this seems really appropriate and it's something that you've worked so hard on. And um, I look forward to a ribbon cutting up there, I've never even been up there, so um, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Marty.
One more Monday.
Well, you still have to get through staffing tomorrow, so just one day at a time.
I will, I promise. We won't call it set. Thanks, everybody, for your support over the years. You know, it's been. Oh. We've, we've, we've.
Thank you.
Been on a roller coaster more than once and uh, there's been a lot of really interesting challenges and it's not me that's done it all, it's taken the whole town. So you gotta pat yourselves on the back as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your years of service.
Thank you.
We'll see you out on the water.
Yeah.
All right, well, that was the most fun part of the night. Feel free to to go, you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting, but feel free to stay if you'd like to, we've just got a couple more items. Um, next up, I think I see Anna Cole over there to talk to us and and a couple other people as well. Um, about the Carbondale Youth and Family Advisory Council, which um, we've granted our tobacco tax funds to. And this is their annual recommendations, so.
Your chance to say bye to Mark.
All right, thank you, Maris.
Okay, perfect, okay. Hey, everybody, my name is Anna Cole, I'm the Chief of Student and Family Services for the Roaring Fork Schools. In this context, I also facilitate the Carbondale Youth and Family Advisory Council, I'll let Michael introduce.
I am Michael Hayes, Executive Director of Compass. We support Carbondale Community School and our sister school, Aspen Community School. Uh, I serve on that council and uh, follow Anna's instructions.
And we also have Jen Close as a parent who's new newly joined um, the council and and really jumped in when we made a call for more parents and youth participation on the grants. I think that tonight, really, we're here, um, as you all know, we have, you've allocated funding to the Youth and Family Advisory Council. We're doing a number of different things with that funding. One of the 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 components is a uh, grant award to nonprofits. We're trying to get onto a schedule that more aligns with the Carbondale Community Grants. We're, we're still a little behind, but we're catching up. So we're coming to you with recommendations for the 2023 fiscal year investments for those grants um, to nonprofits. And then we're hoping by the fall, when the Carbondale um, Community Grant process comes out, this could run parallel so that we would have that to you before the the actual 2024 fiscal year starts. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that it's okay to ask questions there because this has been confusing, that it's just been, we we allocate the funding in our normal budget cycle. And then they get the fund, the funding sort of sitting there waiting to be asked for right now. And then they've had time to say, okay, they do their own internal grant process and now they're saying, all right, here's how we'd like to spend that money. Um, so we've already allocated the big bucket of funding to this group and this is how it'll be divided up internally.
Yeah.
Yeah. Request, this was already in our 2023 budget. And then you'll put in specific requests for, you know, each group to get their share.
Exactly, and so that's what we're, we're bringing you tonight that was in the memo and in the um, the slides that were there is is a recommendation for the 2023 funding. Um, I would say at one change over last year's, and you saw kind of updates of what the 2022 investments were used for in the memo. Um, I, I think our process was a lot more fun this year in terms of the grant um, review process. We had a lot more parent and again, these are nonprofit grants, so we had parent representation. We had a school administrators, school staff participate on the kind of the adult side of things. And then the youth council that's facilitated by stepping stones um, had a very engaged in, I wish Kyle Crowley was here to actually talk about how the youth went through their um, revision process following the similar process that the parents or the adults did. And we were pretty close in the recommendations. And so um, it feels, it feels uh, pretty great to bring you the 2023 grant recommendations, broader group of nonprofits that applied. Um, and you can see the 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 breakdown in recommendations for funding. Trying to think of the other, I think the other big pieces that we wanted to to share with you um, about 2022 was the school-based mental health investments were pretty significant. And I'll let Michael speak a little bit to Carbondale Community School, but um, I think across the board in terms of like return on investment, this was a, this is pretty significant in terms of impact, this amount of funding that went to schools for school-based mental health. I don't know if you want to add anything, Michael?
Sure, I can just, um, I'm, I'm sure many of you have heard uh, in the media about the school mental health crises or the student mental health crises that we're seeing from uh, youth, teenagers and young adults. And um, the numbers are alarming and staggering. And then you sort of say, well, what do you do about it? Well, these, these dollars are making a huge difference for all Carbondale schools and putting more uh, mental health professionals in each of the schools. I can speak specifically to our school, Carbondale Community School. Uh, we had a mental health professional in partnership with the Aspen Hope Center uh, serving our students, 140 students more or less uh, four days a week. And um, that counselor touched every, every student in our school and had intensive relationships with about 20% of our students. So that's a, it's a significant difference for just one of the schools and I think that was mirrored in all of the schools across Carbondale, so thank you.
And similarly, we had all the the schools kind of report where that funding went, you got to see the summaries of that. We're looking forward to um, a similar allocation. And to be honest, the way that allocation broke down was we had leaders from all the schools come together, look at that amount of money and talk about enrollment needs and come to consensus on how that was allocated. The, the actual allocations that we would use for 2023 three are to be determined because as you know, when we've talked about school-based mental health, we have a pretty um, robust blended funding stream to try to pull this off. And we were waiting to hear on our um, Colorado Department of Education School Health Professional Grant, that'll fall into the mix. We've um, as the Roaring Fork Schools have adjusted our application this year, um, sweeping up our um, charter schools into our application. So it would kind of reallocate what we would do with the Carbondale funding when we, if and when we get that funding secured. So um, and and really believe that um, there's a, there's a really nice spirit of collaboration among the schools that are participating in this Youth and Family Advisory Council. Um, and so it feels like that team's gonna be able to sit down and and make a fair and equitable allocation for the school-based mental health funding. The other piece, last time we talked to you, that we, we really felt like we wanted to see more of was data-informed um, allocations of resources, how's our kind of impacts? Um, and so we, we, we did some data, trying to see what was out there that we could be pulling in terms of data and how the kids are doing and impact. And you saw some of the trends from the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey in 2021. It's a massively robust survey. Um, and in the town of Carbondale, both Bridges High School and Roaring Fork High School participate in in the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey. And we were able to have CU Ann Schutz, who administers the survey, combine the Carbondale-specific data. Um, which was really interesting because uh, a lot of times, especially with Bridges, which is a smaller population, a lot of that data is kind of um, screened out because the the sample size is too small. Um, so we were able to pull some kind of Carbondale-specific data. The problem with Healthy Kids, it only happens to every two years and it's pretty delayed. Um, but it is incredibly robust, there's over 300 questions, it's kind of a choose your own adventure. So if kids answer yes to one particular risky behavior, it opens up a whole body of questions. Um, and so to be honest, our, our council got a little overwhelmed when we started to look at the data. We also wanted more middle school data. And so what we're, what we're really proposing moving forward with data is similar to the youth symposium, the mapping project that we did with you all in September. Um, what we'd really like to see, and we now have a commitment that all our Carbondale Middle Schools will participate in the Healthy Kids Colorado 2023 Administration. So um, there's, there'll be a really unique opportunity, I think, when that data comes out, the kids will take it in the fall. We usually get the data six to eight months afterwards for us to have Ann Schutz pool Carbondale-specific data. Um, and we'd really like to to propose kind of a similar process where we have different groups of youth um, really dig into the data and interpret it, analyze it and try to pull out for all of you and for our community what matters and what's important. Um, and we anticipate a, a similar kind of symposium to invite you all to kind of a work session with youth and looking at that data when it comes out. So instead of the mapping project, you'll see that we proposed to allocate some funding to a youth data summit, um, just to try to go through the weeds of what really matters. Um, because there's a lot of information. So that's kind of where we landed on that. Um, I think the other pieces we talked about was professional development, over 100 people participated in various forms of professional development. We had some great ideas of of different things um, that we want to do slight, slight to adjust that investment. We still want to make sure there's professional development offered. Um, there's some, there's some new evidence-based youth mental health first aid training that is actually um, designed for youth to take to be peer mentors. So we really want to bring that to to Carbondale. Um, and so hoping to push that training out. We wanna, we actually didn't quite spend all the money on professional development because of our partnerships with the trainers. And so we'd really like to consider incentivizing youth parents and community members to participate in these trainings by pay, basically paying them um, to participate, especially not the folks who are doing it because they work in Carbondale and their boss is telling them to go to this training. But folks who are showing up as volunteers and community members um, to take some of the training. So we'd like to allocate some of the funding to incentivize trainings, to expand marketing, and then we want to push into some more of this kind of peer-to-peer work. So those are some changes. Um, I think those are the big, the big ticket items and how we're shifting the work. Yeah. Open to questions and concerns?
Yeah, um, I just have a question, why don't I see any mention of Bridges in here?
In terms of, oh, the funding for Bridges, they, that's a great question. They currently have school-based mental health provided by um, a different grant, and I'm trying to remember the name of it, um, that funds a school social worker for Bridges. And so it's kind of outside.
Okay, so they already have their own source of funding?
They do, they do, yes, no, thank you for asking, thank you.
Well, and I, I just want to point out, um, I appreciate the work, Anna, that you all have done to look at the school-based mental health as like one big bucket of this work and not get the schools to compete for that and look at, we need to, we need to distribute that wherever the need is most in our community. And then look at sort of what's left and then that's what's more of the competitive grant sort of process. So um, and if, yeah, if, if one need is met through another grant, great, we don't have to meet that need. So yeah, I just think that's a really good approach here and I think it is, it's a really close tie to the purpose of this tax. Um, and that mental health crisis that Michael um, described, I mean, it's troubling to see some of the statistics that are in here about the percentage of students reporting signs of depression and um, you know, there's a lot of things in there that are very troubling to read, so um, I think it's critical that we continue to provide that. And you know, even when you, when you see the terrible news headlines and you think about what can we do to reduce school uh, violence? Um, it's less about hardening entrances and arming people and it's more about this, right? This is the upstream work so that somebody doesn't feel like they have to resort to that. So I think it's actually a critical investment and it's just the safety of our schools and community as well. So I appreciate that. Other thoughts, questions, comments? I'm looking at you because you've had a lot of interest in this over time, but if you don't have anything, that's great.
Um, I'll just add, um, I just, reading through this, I just really appreciate all the work that you guys are doing and then the community members who are participating. Because um, it would just be really difficult for us to take this pool of funding and meet these goals on our own. And we would kind of be probably having people compete against each other and this is just, it fits really well um, for Carbondale. And and I'll just back that up, that I just really appreciate the investment that we're making in uh, that direct, um, you know, whether it's a partnership with Hope Center or whoever, but the direct services to students in our schools. Because um, that's where we need it, that's where the, the kids are in our community. So um, I'm, even, even though you're trying to catch up on a timeline, I still, that's not a concern to me. Like these funds are getting out in our community, so really appreciate all the work you're doing to work on that. And thanks, Jen, for joining the Youth Council.
Yeah, and just to comment on the timeline, it, it's not a concern to me either, I appreciate you mentioning that, Eric. I think what'll be nice is when it does align eventually, we'll be able to see all those other kind of mini-grants in the context of this. And it, this is a pool of funding that's over three times as large as the other pool of funding. Um, and it's making some really big impacts. Um, you know, we generally dedicate 1% of our general fund budget to um, discretionary grants to local nonprofits. Um, and it's, you know, it's a couple thousand here and 5,000 there, and this feels really good to be able to say like it's 40,000, it's 25,000, it's significant um, amounts that can really make an impact on such critical needs. So I think when we align those, we'll just be able to see them together, but um, it's not a concern and it's not anybody's fault. And I think that this is a good, good move that we're, you know, in the first half of our year at least, and the money's ready to be requested and and has been allocated, so that's good. Any other questions or comments?
Oh, one about um, flavor ban vaping kind of thing. So have you come across that within your environment? Um, has that slowed down the use of vaping materials or?
You know, that's a great question, Lonnie, that what we saw in Healthy Kids from 2015 data was when the town of Carbondale changed rules around flavor bans and age, um, increased the age. There's actually a question in the Healthy Kids Survey that asks about how easy is it for you to buy vape products? And what we saw was a parallel where the kids' perception of ease of access went down. We're starting to see that come back up and it, it also parallels with the lived experience in our schools of kind of pre-COVID. There was this rise in 16, 17, 18 around vaping, which is when a lot of our towns got involved. Um, and I, I think for a minute, because of the awareness, because of the real big push on education and then tied with COVID, we started to see usage numbers go down. Um, that's all come, it's, it's clipping back up at kind of a vicious pace right now. And so it feels like we're behind the eight ball a little bit. In fact, I just came from a, a meeting and the, with, with um, school leaders across the Roaring Fork Schools this afternoon, really leaning back into our substance prevention intervention treatment. Process and system and really trying to reboot, boot that. Um, I think the perception of, of access isn't climbing up as fast as use is, but um, there are concerning trends that we're watching for 2023. I mean, we know that those rules make a difference and when we look at the evidence-based things that community leaders can do, that's like the first on the list is make it hard to access. Um, and then the second thing is about social norms and that's really hard in the state of Colorado. So um, that came up a lot for us in our conversation earlier this afternoon, but it's definitely something we're watching.
So maybe as part of your conversation, you're already aware of this, um, last year I participated as a mentor in one of the Capstone Projects um, that um, Raleigh Backrack did. Uh, and it's going to be activated, the results will be activated um, valley-wide, beginning with Picken County. Because that's where the project originated and then it's um, kind of hoping to permeate its way through the Roaring Fork Valley so that everybody's on the same page. Um, so maybe that's just something, a footnote to be aware of, that'll be coming down at some point this summer uh, into next year uh, that you can be prepared for to take advantage of. Um, yeah.
And along those lines, you know, just back to the original intent of this was started around um, vaping was really the sort of um, thing that we were responding to that felt like a crisis at that moment. Um, and I think the whole sustain.
Partners, right? And similar to, I think, the way that our schools are approaching mental health is like it starts to get out of our areas of expertise is into like addiction treatment and counseling. And we, we struggle right now as a valley to find partners that have capacity um, to do that work. There's some real promise we're seeing with um, a way out as a somewhat of a, a partner that we've really used. Um, limitations there that you have to want um, to stop using and not all of our kids are in that space yet. So we're still really grappling with what works. Um, hence this actually literal meeting that ended 20, about an hour ago. Um, to really talk about what, what we can do to help address the usage that we're seeing. And to be honest, the school leaders and most of who came was our, our high school principals said, we need to focus on elementary because the. We need to focus on elementary because the kids that they're seeing that are using and that have, that are struggling at high school, we've had. The kids in our district, we've had them in our communities for the last fifteen years, and we knew in elementary that. You know, you guys have looked at, we've talked a lot about protective factors and risk factors. We knew that those kids had risk factors in kindergarten. Um, and now we're seeing them as freshmen and sophomores, and they're struggling. Um, and we knew that. And so we really feel like there's a disconnect. And what we would say upstream and early interventions before drugs and alcohol are even accessible for kids. Um, that that we need to be providing more mental health wraparound, family wraparound, support services, education. Um, trusted adults, mentorship programs. Um, I think in a lot of ways, we're seeing that that's. That's an area that we need to be pushing. That was kind of a, a big takeaway that I had this afternoon.
Is that part of the Hope Center skill set or not really? Is the Hope Center, is that Michelle Muthings group?
Okay, got it. You know, it's, 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 it's so interesting. They, they're as a mental health provider, community mental health provider, when we think of community mental health, you often think of like sitting on a couch with a mental health provider. Um, and that's been a great model in our high schools and our partnership at the Hope Center has been wonderful and and very uh, quick to implement in the high schools. And as we've increasingly said, we need more help younger. Um, Hope Center has adapted with us in the way that they provide services, and I think like the the partnership that the Carbondale Community School has had with Hope Center where we're really. Trying to figure out what does behavioral and mental health look like for a six year old who's not going to sit down. And talk for, you know, twenty minutes about how they're coping with stressors. Um, and so it's been. Really an interesting partnership, and they've been a a really adaptive and responsive partner to try to figure out, yeah, what does that look like for little guys? You guys live it.
Yeah, we uh, we find, uh, and it was quite intentional to bring the supports to whole class, small group supports, trying to do some um. Broad based and uh, work with all of our families and then to uh, to sort of dial in with those families that needed some more specific work and. To Anna's point about wraparound services, our, our next level is really um, starting to uh, invite families in to do some of that work as well.
Yeah, it it's, it's interesting. Those Hope Center providers in the elementary schools, we see they're moving and moving to schedules that look like. They work at school noon to six or ten to six, and they do family counseling when school ends, and that's been really interesting to see that, that work shift. Um, the only last thing that I would add, and I know we've talked about this, that Carbondale often gets out in front of. Addressing concerns and issues, and I, I'm optimistic and just to share this with you is that like. The work that you all have done to shore up school based mental health. Um, i- is is influential across the valley, and for a long time, we've. You, I've been very aware that Garfield County hasn't supported this kind of work yet. And part of the challenge is that the readiness of our neighboring districts, Garfield RE two and sixteen, they have, it hasn't been there. Um, the last two to three years are, have, there's been a lot of work, and I think it's led by communities like Carbondale and programs like our school based health program. Um, they're, they're, they're in a better, different place, a more um. Uh, willingness to work on school based mental health in RE two and sixteen, and just want to share that like in the last two weeks. I met with all three superintendents, we discussed shared interests, um, shared goals, and are going to have a shared approach to um, reaching out to Garfield County for support. For school based mental health, for um, family wraparound services, and we've also enlisted. Um, a professional grant writing team that that is. Roaring Fork Schools were too small for the kind of grants this group writes, but if you include all of Garfield County public schools, they're more interested in talking to us. So it's. Um, there's also some, I feel very optimistic about some of the work that we're going to be able to do with a larger group of all the districts because of the readiness, and I think frankly, because of what folks have seen works. Um, and that that is, you know, the kids. The data we're seeing is very similar across the state, certainly across Garfield County. So there is some, um, I'm optimistic that we'll, we'll have some more funding streams to work with as well in the future.
Great. Sounds like you have full support of this board and and a lot of appreciation for the, the kind of work that you're doing that, as Erica said, we're not in a position to do. Um, to allocate this funding to to the highest needs. You know, in a perfect world, we'll see this funding. Decrease because nobody smokes anymore over time, and then we won't have it and we won't need it. I would note that we have a fourteen percent. Um, decline in tobacco tax revenue so far in twenty twenty three over twenty twenty two. Um, at this point in the year, so we are seeing a decrease. Is that because people are smoking less? Sounds like your data doesn't support that. It's probably that. Adults are buying their products where it's taxed less, whether that's online or outside the town limits, but. Um, making it harder for kids to get access to was one of the key recommendations when we started all this, so. Um, that, that's, that's really what that tax is there for. Um, I'd encourage you to, you know, keep being creative, and I, what I wouldn't want to see is that this becomes just kind of a. Um, a routine, right? That these, these groups get this much funding every year and and it just goes into their general fund, like they're doing really important work, stepping stones in youth zone and everybody. Um, is doing really important work, so I don't want to um, negate that at all. At the same time, I think continuing to ask those questions, what are we seeing in the data? What's the most effective use? Um, how do we get at these core issues? Um, those are the right questions, so appreciate that. Any other comments? Otherwise, I think we should probably have a motion.
Real quick comment. Um, thank you. I saw you kept your administrative course way, way down. So the money's going where we all wanted to go to, to the programs, and like Ben said, yeah, I mean, this money was. To provide a disincentive to people to smoke. Okay, and make it harder for them to get the product. And in that sense, it's worked, and on a more macro level. Uh, companies like Juul that were providing flavors. Um, that appeal to younger people have uh, kind of cut back on that. The flavors are still there. But um, so it's doing what we ask it to do. And thank you for being collaborative in your approach, including the parents, as well as the professionals and the kids. Leave it at that.
Yeah, so I think a motion would be, uh, I don't have a recommended motion, but probably to um. Allocate the funding as requested by uh, the Carbondale Youth and Family Advisory Council.
Is that a motion, Derek?
I'm not gonna, I can't make a motion.
I'll make a motion to provide the funding as, how did you put it?
Um, as requested.
As requested.
Second.
All right, motion by Marty, second by Eric, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Michael. Thanks, Anna. Thanks, Jen. Thank you for being part of all this. Um, okay. Moving right along, uh, special event liquor license for Wilderness Workshop Community Party at Sopris Park, and I'll just note that. Um, we've moved smaller liquor licenses for special events like the CMC went to our consent agenda, so I think it's the first week that we've started that. Um, with our new town clerk, we just discussed that and said, let's leave them on our, our public ag- agenda for a public hearing if it's. In one of our parks, or if it exceeds the threshold where our police department requires them to have private securities.
But this says in our park, so that's right.
Exactly, just so that if it's ever like, wait, why, why aren't we hearing all of these? If it's a smaller one at the orchard or something like that. Um, we'll always give them the option if they want to come promote their event, but otherwise, we're not going to make people show up at a meeting because those have been pretty routine. Um, great. Beverly, go ahead, please. Tell us a little bit about the Wilderness Workshop Community Party at Sopris Park.
Hi there, good evening. Thank you all for having me. Um, as you said, I'm here representing Wilderness Workshop. And our annual community party in Sopris Park. Um, this year will be on Friday, June second, that is the first Friday. Um, and it'll be from five thirty to eight thirty. We'll have some great uh. Family friendly activities there in the park, some live music by the Confluence and a band called the Pink Hawks, which does like a. A fusion kind of cumbia style music. We'll have. A variety of food trucks this year, so uh, we're growing that side of it a little bit. We'll have a. A taco truck, Mama Pierogies, and then um, Senor Mango will be there as well. And so we encourage everybody to come out and um, learn a little bit about the workshop. Uh, and what we're doing here in our backyard and meet your community members. Um, I, I just wanted to know. Um, uh, make a small but meaningful correction. I saw in Eric's cover letter, he. Referred to the party as a membership party. Um, and I just wanted to stress that. Everyone's welcome. It's open to the community. There's no, you know, no restrictions or exclusions. Um, you don't have to be a member to come, or you don't have to, there's no pressure to become a member, just come on out and have a good old time in the park.
Great, thanks for that clarification. So there's not a, don't need to get tickets or anything. It sounds like it's just wide open.
That's right, yep.
Okay, any questions from the board? Okay, motion?
I'm looking for it.
I would move to approve the liquor license for Wilderness Workshops Community Party in Sopris Park.
Second.
Motion by Erica, second by Lonnie, all in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Hi, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Beverly. Good luck with your event.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Um, all right, and Kevin's back with us for Industry Place Roundabout Subsurface Utility Engineering Contract. Which he has an acronym for that he might use that threw me off when he used it.
Sue? Sue, yeah, not to be confused with Johnny Cash's version. Um, so, as you know, we've been working on preliminary design for the roundabout at Industry Way and one thirty three for a couple of years now. We're kind of moving it into higher gear right now. We've done what we can do, and this. Proposal in front of you is kind of the next step. Um. One of the things to remember about this is it. It, it may have been being done on individual projects, maybe in large cities or things like that, but. Changes a few years ago to our eight one one law require it on projects of this scale now. So basically, the point of this is to try. To identify conflicts and design your way around them versus. Cutting a fiber optic cable that knocks out the internet in town. That's the worst scenario I could come up with. Water lines are less important. Yeah, um, so. The process is basically you start out almost like you were a contractor and you, you get a call in eight one one, like everybody comes out and marks their lines. But then based on that, there's some higher level detail work that goes into that at some, you know, particular, like if you had a. Pipe crossing the road, you'd want to actually during the design. Dig down and find that pipe and know where it is, how deep it is, so you can identify conflict, so. That's kind of the main point of Sue. We did uh, solicit quotes earlier this spring. As the memo says, we received two, one from Horrocks Engineers out of. Greenwood Village, uh, their main company is in Utah, but their. Colorado office is down there, and then we also received one from SGM. You can see the price differences in there. And I did note that there was, there were some things that were accepted out of SGM's quote that were included in Horrocks, so. Um, our recommendation is to move forward with the agreement that is in the packet. One thing I didn't mention in the fiscal analysis piece of this is. So far on this project, we have been using funds that were collected as part of. Um, development along one thirty three in the area, and this fits within the funds that we have collected, so. We would propose to use those until they're gone.
Great. So existing source of funding and necessary work for a. Big, big public works project that's been on the radar for a long time and helping us move that forward. It sounds like a good idea to me. Questions or comments?
I'll move to accept the quote from Horrocks Engineers and authorize the mayor to execute the attached agreement.
Second.
Motion by Chris, second by Lonnie, all in favor, say hi.
Hi. Hi.
Okay, that was easy. Kevin, do you want to just give us, and maybe just for the public's general interest, we chatted a little bit today about like, what might the timeline start to look like? Without any detail, um, but this is a pretty key part of the uh, timeline, so if people are wondering, when's that roundabout going to, going to show up out there? Um, what does the future kind of start to look like?
So in general, we'll complete this part of the work, refine the design based on what we see, and then we'll start. Getting C dot involved in looking at it, giving us feedback on that. Once we get to the point where C dot is comfortable with it. Then I think that's the point where. Uh, it gets real. Um. At that point, we'll have a pretty good idea, hopefully, of the cost of the project. Which will allow us to take the plans and those estimated costs out and look for funding for the project. This is not going to be cheap. Um, and nobody should think it is going to be. So, you know, knowing we have to get to that point and then identify funding sources before we can actually go to construction. I would say probably at this point, the earliest we would see like. Equipment out there, starting this project would probably be in sometime in twenty twenty five.
Okay, so we get the engineering done, and then you said start working with C dot to kind of get them comfortable with it, and then we've already got the basic design drawn, right?
Yeah, we, uh, our initial stab at it, which is, you know. The tricky thing was trying to kind of work around some of the constraints of the project, so. You know, another piece of that is, once we get everybody comfortable, we'll probably need to talk to a few of the property owners in that area about right away acquisition at some of those corners, particularly on the east side of the road.
Okay, well, it's a, it's a long term project, um, but I think we're committed to it and remain committed to it, and uh, just chip away at it one step at a time like this. So thanks for the update and for taking that step.
Yeah, thanks.
More thing, I know we're done, but this is not related to the roundabout. I just need to take responsibility if. I'm sure you guys were disappointed that my admin report wasn't in this packet. It'll be in the next one.
You know, you could have probably gotten away with it. I don't know that we.
That's okay. We'll give you a free pass.
He's very, very honest.
All right, thanks, Kevin. Uh, well, along those lines, the, the last item, it's not really an agenda item, but just to note in the um, packet, and for anybody that wants to read it, it's on carbondelgov.org in this week's packet. Um, we have minutes from all of our various boards and commissions and admin reports. Um, I always think that the finance report, if you're skimming through this, are really worth um, a moment. We, we have our first quarter. Uh, sales tax revenue. Um, looking like it's coming in about on projection, right? It's not the huge bump that we've seen over the last couple of years where things were sort of beyond all projections.
That's correct.
But it's not down or flat either.
Mm-hmm. I have, um. I talked to Christie the other day about um, coming in just past. The time of the next quarterly admin report and giving a verbal report up to date mid-year. And you know, mid-budget year to the board, um, so that you can have more of a discussion about where our finances are before budget season starts.
And if, if you got into this the way I did and geeked out on it a little bit, did you notice the bags, the bag graph?
Yeah, what was that about?
That's the new bag law, I think.
Wider, wider adoption, other stores.
So yeah, so it's over sixty thousand bags sold, um, instead of the average of about twenty thousand bags sold in a month. Um, so that's a, that's a big, big jump, and it'll be some extra revenue in that fund that we can start to think about in the next fiscal year, what. What that should go toward waste reduction.
Yeah, isn't the state getting ten cents out of every bag?
State's getting a little.
Oh, the state is getting four cents.
And then the business can keep some?
Mm-mm.
No? So we're getting sixteen cents?
Oh, I'm sorry, the state is, the business keeps four cents.
State doesn't keep any?
And the state doesn't get any.
Because they're not doing anything with the enforcement.
Okay, yeah, and I anticipate that, well, the hope is, I guess, that like the tobacco tax.
Right.
Over time, that will go down as people get less accustomed to, but, you know, not having their bags with them.
Bringing their bags with them.
It's still a huge jump, and it'll be a, you know, probably at least a doubling of that um, fund, and it, and that's what helps pay for things like the. Um, waste cleanup day this weekend and things like that, so we'll, we'll find good uses for it, but I think.
There is a little bit of offset in additional costs to. Develop the new um, form and all of that, but it's not substantial.
Okay. Um, all right, well, I think that's it, so. Um, all right. Well, I think that's it. So next week we have the week off, I believe. It's first week of the month. And then a few items lined up on the next agenda. It's looking like we'll be a little bit further out for the short-term rental discussion. We just want to wait and get a little bit more data and a little bit more information about that and make sure people are really aware of it. So that won't be at our first meeting in May. Anything else for the good of the group?
I'll probably be online in May, but that's fine.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Colin.